This is Rick Hackett Staff. We are recording. You may begin.
Thanks, Rick. Appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This August 18th, meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission will now come to order. I'll start with a brief announcement and then take the roll call. Due to COVID-19 concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted to the planning commission webpage at www.boco.org/pc. Today, there will be no public comment or public hearing during the public hearings. So I won't read all the instructions around that unless someone tells me I need to. And we'll move on to roll call. If you could each just say here after your name, Sam Libby here, Gavin McMillan.
Here.
Dave Sue.
Here.
Todd Quigley. Here. Melanie Neskey.
Here.
Leishan Gargano. Out here, Mark Bloomfield.
Here.
Sam Fitch.
Here.
And then Goldfarb.
Here.
Okay, thank you all. A few reminders just to identify yourself before you speak with any questions or comments for staff and speak slowly and clearly. There was no votes today, so there's no roll call votes. And please keep your video on during the meeting if at all possible, remain unmute until you want to speak and identify yourself as planning commissioner, Sam would be, for example. And then we'll move in to the next item on the agenda, which is staff updates.
Hello, Commissioners, Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director of Community Planning and Permitting. I don't believe we have any staff updates for you today.
Okay, thanks, Kim. We have one item on the docket today. And normally I'd explain the whole public hearing process, but there's no comment on this item, so I can skip past all of that since we've all heard it many times already. And we'll move into that item. I don't know who's presenting, but we're happy to take that discussion forward now with staff.
Hello Chair Libby, this is Anna Milner. I'll be presenting today on the People Speak software. So if you'll bear with me one moment, let me share my screen. We'll get started. Is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
Perfect. So hello, everybody. My name's Anna Milner, Administrative Lead with Community Planning and Permitting. Here today to introduce People Speak to the Planning Commission. So our agenda today is just to provide an introduction to the software to the planning commission. After the intro and overview, we'll provide time to gain a little feedback from you all on your thoughts and answer any questions you may have. So a bit of background about how we arrived where we are today. Boulder County has been exploring new technologies for increasing our engagement and making more hearings inclusive, hearings to be more inclusive. And the Community Planning and Permitting Department was exposed to People Speak at past planning conferences and was impressed with the software and the enhanced public hearing concept that it provided. So as we've begun exploring this, we thought it'd be a great idea to introduce to you all and gain feedback on how we all think it would work for Boulder County. Travis Parker with the City of Lakewood actually worked with the software developer to design People Speak. So the platforms always had public hearings and the local government processes in mind. So before we launch into what People Speak is, a bit of info about our current practice as it relates to hearings. We provide a hearing notice in the paper 14 days prior to each hearing. For most hearings, we provide a 1,500-foot APO notice and also post a sign at the property, which notifies the public of the application that's been submitted. We will also post our hearing notices and agendas on the docket pages and the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission homepages and the County Open Meetings portal. And then in terms of participation, prior to COVID, the primary option was for people to actually attend the in-person hearing at the courthouse at the date and time of the hearing. Now we're having our hearings virtually and interested members of the public can email their comments or mail comments to staff. And then our staff packets are available on the docket webpages seven days prior to the hearing. So that's how our process works today. So People Speak, what is it and why is it so appealing and a potential option for moving forward? So it's an online platform that provides a way for the public to comment on pending land use applications and review all of the material related to the application in one place. So the concept we're really hoping to pursue is providing a one-stop shop for members of the public to review staff reports, staff presentations, applicant presentations if they're provided ahead of the hearing by about two weeks and then provide public comments at their convenience on this platform. And all of the public comments would also be housed in the same location. So People Speak does not replace the public hearing. It's simply an enhancement to the existing noticing period and provides a more convenient way for people to be involved in a hearing without actually having to attend the hearing. So the goal is to mimic the public hearing process. And another compelling thing that we've come across is that Lakewood and their development gathered data over the course of about a year. And that data is displayed here. The middle pie chart shows by decade, the population age of Lakewood over the age of 25. And as you can see, it's a pretty even distribution. And these are actual demographics from Lakewood. And on the left, you can see that they monitored over the course of this year in-person public hearing attendance by age. That's the first pie chart and found that 80% of attendees were 55 and older. So they weren't getting participation from the demographic of around 25 to 55. So during that same time, they also tracked the online participation and the age of those participants. And as you can see, the metrics more closely match or the data more closely matches the population as a whole. So we can see that online participation is more representative of that demographic. So they also track comments by the time of day, which is really interesting to see here. So they measured when they received public comments, excuse me. And with People Speak, anybody can go online at any time to provide their comments. So as you can see here, the most popular times for comment were 11:00 AM, around 4:00 PM, and then at 9:00 PM late in the evening. And they also found that over the entire period, the data was collected, which was around eight months. They didn't receive one single comment between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM, which happened to coincide with the time of their hearings. So that was really interesting data to look at. And then finally, they tracked the source of public input. So in terms of numbers of comments, right here is just a snapshot of eight cases with the light green representing in-person participation and the dark green representing online participation. And over the entire life of the project where they were tracking, they saw around two times as many online comments received as in-person. So more compelling data to support the case for People Speak. So here's what the platform would look like as it would be for Boulder County. So Engage Boulder County. As you can see here, we've got the meetings listed. It could potentially list any bodies that use the platform and they can be filtered out as you can see. So we're filtered only to show planning commission meetings here. You see each item listed, call to order, roll call, the approval of minutes. And then next to that approval of minutes, you see a colored icon that denotes whether or not the item's actually been decided upon. So that indicates that it's pending. And then underneath that, you can see the docket item for the agenda with the comment bubble denoting that the item's open for public comment. So if anyone were to come to this site, it would be pretty straightforward, all the items on the agenda for that day. And then by clicking into each item or to the docket item, they would then be brought to the agenda item page. And the goal here is to have all the information in a single page. So we've got one page per agenda item. We've got our title at the top with a summary and a map. So summary of the project and a map of the project location if we chose to use that. Location for pre-recorded presentations provided by staff. And then if the applicant chose to provide one, we would also display that, obviously. There's a space underneath for the staff packet for each item. And then the decision-making criteria, if we chose to include that for each docket type. And then the greatest feature about People Speak is this comment field. There's no account needed to provide a public comment. You can simply press the leave a comment button, enter your name and address, provide your comment, and then it's submitted into the record. There's also a phone-in option. So beneath that, there's a button that people could potentially click to gain an access to a phone number, call in and leave a voicemail of their public comment. We could also include that phone number and comment code on our public notification so that people have that. There's a clear indication of the deadline for public comment. And we also have a comment policy on the website. There's no word limit on comments. People can leave as long of a comment as they'd like and attachments can be included to comments. And then, as I mentioned before, comments submitted go straight onto the Engage, they would go straight onto the Engage Boulder County site and into the public record. So what would change for staff? So if we were to move forward with this, staff would prepare their packet materials earlier than they currently are. They would be providing presentation slides two weeks earlier than the hearing. And then those would be posted on the site and be viewable by the public. We would have the ability to add a QR code to the notices that would take folks straight to each agenda item page where all the comments and materials are housed. Staff will be reviewing comments and answers via this platform. They're already obviously reviewing public comments, but in various ways via email or mailed comments, et cetera. And finally, the information would just be posted earlier. People would have more time to review all the information prior to hearing. And then we would revise our newspaper and postcard hearing notices to point people, as I said before, straight to each agenda item site. And then for decision-makers, they'll review, or you actually would review the online comments using the Engage Boulder County platform. So they would all be posted there in addition to any comments that were included in the staff packet that you received. And then you'd be able to refer constituents to the website to provide comment and review all of the materials with everything being in one place. So just to reiterate, Engage Boulder County would mimic the current practice and provide this additional opportunity that I've been talking about for the public to participate and review the materials. The hope is to streamline public comment onto the site and have it all in place. It would not take the place of our current hearing practice. So everything that's happening today would still be happening. So we would still do the notice in the newspaper. We would still mail the notice to adjacent property owners. We would still hold the public hearing and have presentations, and there would still be in-person testimony. So City Lakewood gathered a bit of feedback that they presented to the Wheat Ridge City Council because Wheat Ridge is using this platform as well. And a couple of points they brought up, you know, their decision-makers have appreciated this additional opportunity for public to comment and potentially reaching new audiences that might not have been inclined to participate before the rollout of People Speak. They appreciate the ability to digest the feedback in advance of the meeting and also having one place to send members of the public that are interested in a case. The citizens have expressed that they've appreciated the ability to comment without actually having to be at the meeting in person. They've noted that it's been easier for them to find information on specific items. And there haven't been any reports of issues with ease of use. It's a pretty clean and simple site and it's pretty intuitive. So the feedback has been good there. And then finally, staff has indicated it's more simple for them to upload the case information and that it's also saved them time providing information because they're able to point everybody to one location. And that concludes my introduction to People Speak. And I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback and see what everyone's thoughts are.
Great. Thanks, Anna, for the overview. Screenshots were helpful for sure. Happy to have those questions. I thought maybe start with your last piece about comments from Lakewood. Any things that they were concerned about or that were challenging? Those were all quite positive, which hopefully is, means they just love it totally. But anything they've requested or asked or warned us about or anything like that?
I rewatched the introduction they helped revive with Wheat Ridge today. Many points have been brought up, obviously, from the various commissions and council members that would be using this in the municipal. They've discussed and then they've rolled out and just kind of see how things would go. And in many cases, they're like, we're not sure. So we're just going to roll it out and see if we actually have used cases to come back with to discuss. And I don't think they've had any tremendous pain points. I think they've had discussions that were pretty lengthy in anticipation of pain points. And then it maybe didn't end up being as big of a deal. So I could definitely try and gather some feedback on that that's more decisive, if you'd like, but nothing that's come to my attention.
No, that's good. I don't think you need to gather more necessarily, just if you'd heard anything already. What other questions do we have or comments?
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Did they find that they're getting a larger number of comments with this?
My understanding from the City of Lakewood is yes, that they, the trend has been, and that data was taken in 2019 or 18, so it was a couple of years back. But his data indicated that it was trending upward in terms of receiving more comments. But I'd have to double check that. I'm not sure they've taken any more recent data than that.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I'm curious, you know, one of the things that has occurred to me with all of our Zoom meetings is that in terms of accessibility and equity, having people be able to comment in the public hearing from their homes is incredibly convenient. Is the idea that this would replace that? And that people would just have the place to online comment? Or is there still some kind of idea of maybe having an online option for attending and commenting in public hearings?
So in the current format, yes, that would still continue. If, when, well, when hearings return.
Yeah, sorry. That's what I meant. If we ever get back to doing it.
Yeah, yeah. And then in-person setting. I can't confirm anything, but I know that the idea has been bounced around of having, yes, a hybrid type situation where people could participate in person in addition to commenting virtually, in addition to providing comments, you know, via email or mail. But nothing's been set in stone yet in that regard.
Thanks.
Yeah, I can comment a little bit on that. I don't think, I mean, as Anna started off saying that this is really just an option that we're considering to increase public participation. The actual hearings wouldn't change. So somebody would still be able to either attend virtually or live. You know, when we go back to in-person hearings. But this is an option to allow people to participate and get the same information that they would get during a live proceeding on their own time. So if they couldn't attend, you know, a 3 o'clock hearing on a Thursday afternoon, this would give them the ability to watch a, you know, presentation with slides kind of going over the full application prior to that and then submit their comments on their own time.
Can we make it a requirement that they watch the presentation before commenting?
Commissioner Libby, my other comment I was gonna add was, I think about how this kind of changes a bit of the timing for the staff reports in an interesting way, right? So moving that forward, I'm kind of sent that provides some additional pressure on the planners. I think it just means more meetings will get, you know, a docket would be moved to a different meeting if they couldn't get the timing figured out, right? I know it's always a rush to get it set up the week before. But also, I think one thing in our current setup that we don't have a chance to do is to review the presentation prior to the presentation happening. So we get a staff report, which is a very like long PDF document. Then there's usually almost always a PowerPoint from staff that is incredibly useful, but very different from that staff report. A lot of the same content that we package differently with commentary and more details. And being able to see that and even potentially comment on that ourselves prior to the meeting, I think might prevent some scenarios or we have a request for more info. And they say, well, yeah, we can get that back to you or we can get that for the board of commissioners. But we sometimes end up tabling topics because we want more info. If we could get that comment in a week ahead of time, they bring it to the presentation, add a bit of info. I could see that being more efficient. So I think it's an interesting chance to help to sharpen those presentations before just seeing for the first time. It means we have to take the time to review them ahead of time, which is more volunteer time, but it's a good chance for that.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. I think that's one of the things that we're talking about because we typically like to have everything done on the record at the proceeding itself. So I'm not sure how much sort of, you know, back and forth or would be pre-hearing as opposed to questions that are sort of asked live at the actual proceeding, but appreciate that comment. And it's certainly something we can consider as we think about how these different softwares work.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. If I can just tag on to what Sam was saying, I don't actually know that it will be that much additional time because I know that the number of times that I'm reviewing a packet and I'm flipping back and forth through pages trying to figure out exactly what's going on. And then that's just explained in the staff comment or the staff presentation. I think it could actually streamline it.
This is Commissioner Neskey. I'm wondering what the comment process looks like, if you know that. Is it sort of like a similar, like a Google Doc where you can edit within the application and call out questions? Or are you allowed to review the material and create your own separate comment? Or are you commenting within the documents and in the information?
That's a great question. Yes. So the comment section is separate from the staff packet. And so all of that is living above. And then the comment section actually is like a form that you fill out. And then you provide your name, address, and then there's a separate field for your comment. That's not word limited. So it's separate from the documentation.
Okay. And then those public comments are live on the website and open for other people to view?
Yes, they are. They're in a list format by date and date stamped. Name only listed, addresses hidden from public view except for decision-makers and staff.
Great. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Fitch. Given that format that they are commenting separately, you might include some instructions that suggest it's a good idea for them if they're commenting on a particular point to give the page reference in the staff packet that says, yes, I want to raise a question about something that was said on page A13.
Thank you. That's a great, a great idea. And I'll add that we do have a comment policy established. So we could potentially add that to our comment policy.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Shu. My audio cut out for a little bit during the presentation, so you might have seen this. But, you know, one problem with public comments on webpages is trolls and then getting back and forth, like bullying and that part. What is the mechanism for handling those type of issues?
That's a great question and one that has come up in the past. So the public comment form has, well, to protect from bots, it's got the recap show. So that's one security option. It's not very easy to to create a thread because each comment is individual. So all that being said, there is no great way of monitoring that. I mean, there is a moderate feature with the public commenting. But our stance has been, and the county attorneys can feel free to speak more to this, but that we would probably just approve most everything that came through. However, City of Lakewood and Wheat Ridge, as of the time they were presenting and planning rollout, had not encountered significant issues with that. So that's all the information that I really have.
I think what I would add is that, you know, at this point, we're not sure if we will move forward yet with People Speak or if it will be this exact platform. What we're exploring are just ways to increase public participation. So appreciate the comment raised. And I think, you know, we're not quite into digging into the weeds of how we would address all of the specific things. But I think we appreciate you raising that concern. And it's certainly something that we would need to address and consider, you know, if and when we do implement something like this.
Okay, thanks. Another question. Regarding equity, are there thoughts of improving engagement with non-English speaking residents of the county through this platform or some other mechanism?
That's not currently an option, but it is something we've raised. The hope is yes.
Yeah, I think the idea would be to sort of start off with something that allows people to participate in public proceedings outside of the live hearing time. And then we could eventually grow on that so that we could expand participation to other non-English speaking populations as well. So sort of probably an incremental approach. I think it would be, it's going to be probably a pretty big launch to even, you know, start to implement something like this. But the idea would be, and the hope would be to continue to grow that type of program if we found that it was effective.
Anna, this is Commissioner Goldfarb. You mentioned that they found greater, that Lakewood found greater participation by other age groups as a result of using this platform. Did they look at any other variables other than age in taking a look at who might be participating more or less?
Not that I'm aware of. That was the only data that they presented. But I can definitely inquire about that. It's a great question. So yes.
This is Commissioner McMillan. Just a question about current practice. When you have an application come in, a land use application, you know, there's a long time, I think, between when the application comes in and you're actually ready for a public hearing. And during that period of time, is that public information, like if someone comes in and says, hey, I hear such and such, an application has been submitted and I'd like to review it. Is that something that the public has access to? And I ask the question because if it is, I wonder particularly on bigger, like really big land use discussions, if maybe there's a place to, on this application to put application materials perhaps before there's a public a public meeting schedule. I just don't know, like what is practice today with those types of applications? Can I come in and see one as a member of the public? And if so, I would think that maybe that information could find its way onto this website as well, but I don't know what the current practice is.
So yeah, so when an application is received, it's public information. After the application's reviewed and deemed complete, my team then refers it out to referral agencies and depending on the type of application would send a postcard notice. And as of that time, the applications are then put onto a docket webpage application software so that the public could view that at any time. That's all prior to the hearing. software so that the public could view that at any time. That's all prior to the hearing. And so that's how it works today. Once it's scheduled for hearing, all the notice information is also on that docket page. Once, yeah. And then once, I think what we would envision, if this were to move forward, at least at the beginning, would be to keep that process the same because the application materials are always included in the staff packet. So then, once that staff packet was posted on to Engage Boulder County, then the public would have that same information there.
Yeah. I think, I think what the public perhaps can't participate in sometimes and perhaps isn't aware of is like how things evolve from the time that an application is made, sometimes between back and forth with staff. And so I'm all for transparency in that process. I also think it helps people know that, you know, people working on it, it's not like the application comes in and then just shows up at a hearing. There's a lot of work that staff does with the applicant. And I think if we can use this tool to make that clear and just show the whole transparency of the process, I think it'll get more people involved. And just more understanding of how this all works.
That's a great comment. I think we do have, as Anna mentioned, the docket pages already. So anytime we have a complete application, that's getting posted online and somebody could search for it and it shows, you know, the application materials, the the status of the application, and then eventually the hearing dates will get inserted if it requires a public hearing. But I think one of the appealing things about People Speak is that it would put all of the information in one place so that somebody doesn't have to go to our docket web search engine to, you know, try to find that and then look for other information about the public hearing and and that sort of thing. So that, that's one of the appealing options. But we do have everything posted now. And we can actually share that with Planning Commission. If you weren't aware of that, we'll send a link out to our docket record search page. So you can see what that looks like now.
Yeah. And maybe in the spirit of having everything in one place, you have just one page on here that says upcoming docket items. You know, just so people are going to one place instead of two, I think you can make it simpler. Yeah, if you would send that to me, I'd love to see it. I know I could probably search and find it, but I'd like to see it.
Absolutely. We, and I think, you know, a part of this is just to make things easier. The easier things are and accessible to folks, hopefully the better participation that we can get and comments from, from people, or at least the information that they need regardless of whether or not they have comments about it.
Yeah.
And just another note, Rick brought to my attention that there is a subscription feature on this. It's not very robust right now. So people can actually subscribe to receive updates on the outcome of a decision or outcome of a hearing, excuse me, and how the board decided on each given item. So that's another option for being informed, staying informed if you're not able to participate.
That actually does bring up another thing for me. I think it'd actually be really helpful if we, as commissioners, could get a little summary like that after it goes to the Board of County Commissioners. Because so often we, we decide something and it goes off to them and I have no idea what happened. And yes, I know that I could look it up, but to that point of making it easier for us, that would be awesome.
Mark, thanks for that. I used to do that. And I think I just completely forgot about it when we switched to virtual hearings due to COVID. So thanks for putting that on my radar again. That's certainly something that we can provide in the staff updates is, you know, on a quarterly basis or, you know, maybe not monthly basis because not everything will go to the commissioners immediately afterwards. But on a regular basis, I can update you on what the decisions have been from the commissioners for items that you provided a recommendation on. So thank you for getting that back on my radar. I will, I'll get on it.
That would be awesome.
Yep. No problem.
Any other questions?
And Dale did post the docket webpage in the chat. If you want to take a look at that, I can also email it around to you as well.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Is there any kind of a timeline on this at this point?
So we're still in the exploratory phase, so there is no, no current timeline right now. We're trying to explore this in addition to the new agenda management software that the VOCC is, has acquired and is training on. So not at this time.
Yeah, I mean, as you can imagine, a lot is in flux. We're still doing hearings and proceedings virtually right now. We expect, I mean, we expected to go back, you know, to in-person hearings at some point. But now with the Delta variant sort of becoming more of an issue, I'm not sure what our timeline is going to be for returning to in-person. So there are a lot of uncertainties at this point in time. I think what we're trying to do is eventually set ourselves up for a hybrid approach where we can both, where we can do both virtual and in-person and accommodate both of those. So I think People Speak is a great example of a platform that allows for this kind of public participation and increased participation. It's, we wanted to introduce it as an example, not so much to tie you to this particular platform, but to make you aware that this is something that we're interested in exploring and to see, you know, how receptive you are and what kinds of questions or suggestions or thoughts that you have about this, this type of tool that the county might explore using.
Definitely. I'm really excited about the concept. It's, when I was studying in urban planning and starting off as a planner, I always felt that, that, you know, that was sort of a pinch point in getting more public participation. And I'm really not at all surprised about the 25 to 55 age group being the least likely to make a lot of comments in public hearings. So I think it's exciting and it's one thing that I was hoping would happen with, you know, everything that we've learned from COVID and the adoptions that we've had to make. I think that this makes sense to explore.
Agreed. I think it's awesome.
The more ways that we can get people to engage, the better. So I'm on board as well.
All right. Anything else from staff you want to cover? Or is that all we have? What a nice short day today. Thanks for all the info, Anna.
Thank you all.
And I do want to thank Anna. She's been the lead on really exploring the software and diving into the details and seeing how sort of the nuts and bolts would work in the real world. So she's done a really excellent job at being the project lead on, on that research. So kudos to her.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Bloomfield, I move re-adjourn.
All second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Motion passes. Thank you to staff. Thank you all. See you next month.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Take care.
Bye.